I'm going to start the July 28, 2025, meeting of the Fairfield RTM. Will the clerk take the role?
Ken Astorita. Peter Britton. Melissa Longo. Brooks Baricino. Thanks. Tara Cook Littman. Megan McCloth. Dave Rock. Chris Shea. Bob Elwinger. Mike Hartigan. Jeff Steele. Cindy Waldron. Laura Carson. Michelle McCabe. Marcy Spalier. Liz Esma. Josh Garskov. Kristen O'Neal. Sharon Pistilli. Jay Walk. Rob Blanchard. Nancy Donnie. Eric Juniak. Alex Ocampo. Steve Barrettts. Lori Galdenzi. John Keun. Scott Nickel. Lenny Brayman.
Here.
Chris Carroll. Colin Colburn. Christine Ludwazak. Drew Georgiadis. Lisa Havy. Mark McDermott. Karen Whackerman. Matt Ambrose. Justin Contrato. Margaret Horton. Pierre Ratsky.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge and please remain standing for a moment of silence for First Selectman Bill Gerber. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Thank you. First Selectman Gerber's presence will definitely feel missed, especially tonight. Item number two, to consider and act upon the joint committee meetings held on June 16, 2025, and the minutes of the regular monthly meeting held on June 23, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve Representative Pistilli, seconded by Representative Georgiadis? Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none from the body, is there any public comment on the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Item number three, to hear, consider and act upon the following reappointments to the Ethics Commission as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Christopher E. Baker, IT 273 Witting Pond Road, term July 2025 to 2027. Rose Marie Beretta, D 410 South Benson Road, July 2025 to 2027. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative McDermott, seconded by Representative Galdenzi. Mr. Baker was here last week. I believe Ms. Beretta is here today. Is she online or in person? Um, no, she's not. Okay, um. Is everyone else has a name on their representative? Um, can I have a motion to separate the two? Representative Pistilli, seconded by Representative Shea, has made a motion to separate Christopher E. Baker from Mrs. Beretta. All those in favor of separating the vote signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We will separate the vote. We will now vote on Christopher E. Baker for the reappointment to the Ethics Commission. Do I have a motion to approve Representative Pistilli, seconded by Representative Carroll? Is there any discussion from the body on Mr. Baker? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Uh, just put your name in the chat. Uh, I can't see what that just came up. Okay, great. Uh, seeing none. We'll take it to a vote. All those in favor of the reappointment of Christopher E. Baker to the Ethics Commission, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Christopher E. Baker, that passes. Congratulations, Mr. Baker. Moving on, we will now consider Ms. Beretta for reappointment to the Ethics Commission. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Pistilli, seconded by Representative Whackerman. Is there any discussion on this matter? Representative Pistilli.
Oh, no, sorry. Sharon Pistilli, District 5. I just had one question. In this case, do we postpone to a date certain?
You could postpone till the end of the meeting and hope that maybe she'll come, or we could postpone to a date certain.
Okay.
Or we could postpone to the end of the meeting now and then date certain.
Um, okay, so I make a motion that we postpone until the end of the meeting.
Until the end of Agenda Item... After Agenda Item 11.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, seconded by Representative Garskov. Great. There's a motion to postpone the appointment, reappointment of Rose Marie Beretta to the, after the last Agenda Item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those who are in favor of postponing till the last Agenda Item signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We'll hear that later. Moving on, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Resolve that in order to achieve the purposes of the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Deep Trails and Greenways Program and the Connecticut Greenways Council Grant for an open space trail in urbanized Fairfield neighborhoods, funds be expended in the amount of $255,284. Eighty percent of said funds to be made by Connecticut Deep and twenty percent of said funds to be met by the Fairfield Conservation Department for a half-mile recreational trail at 150 Villa Ave. And further resolve that First Selectman William Gerber be and hereby is authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the Town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments thereof to secure said grant. Do I have a motion to approve Representative Whackerman, seconded by Representative Carson? Is there any discussion on this? Representative Pistilli.
I'm Sharon Pistilli, District 5. I'd like to make a motion to remove the words "First Selectman Bill Gerber" and replace them with "The First Selectman."
Do I have a second? Representative McCabe. Representative Pistilli has made a motion to remove First Selectman William Gerber and to replace it with "The First Selectman." Is there any discussion on this amendment? Representative Carroll.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Chris Carroll, District 8. I just want some clarity here, so this doesn't come back, somebody bring it up later. There was a motion on the floor before Representative Pistilli made her motion.
She made an amendment.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do understand.
Yes. She's amending it. Unfortunately, we have to remove the words "William Gerber." Any other discussion from the body? Any comments from the public on the amendment? It's the amendment to remove the wording "William Gerber," not on the actual resolution. Okay. Seeing none. All those, we're just voting on the amendment right now to remove the words "William Gerber" and insert, remove the words "First Selectman William Gerber" and insert with "The First Selectman." All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Moving back to Agenda Item 4 as amended, is there any further discussion from the body? Representative Garskov.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Josh Garskov, District 5. I rise to ask this body to reject this grant. I, unfortunately, I do. This project has been a bit fraught. There's been a lack of communication with the neighbors and that has improved of late, thankfully, and we are grateful for this project, for flood mitigation and open space in our neighborhood. However, the original plans for this project included pretty much clear-cutting the entire property and now the town is thankfully going back and coming up with some alternative plans that hopefully will preserve trees and still mitigate flooding. And frankly, paving just doesn't make sense to me. Parking spaces, trails, picnic areas, pavement, even if it's pervious, I'm not sure actually whether it's pervious or impervious paving. Even if it was pervious, it's not really flood mitigation. If it's impervious, then it's actually instigating flooding. This is a very tight property. We were told by town staff that it's very hard to reconfigure this space to achieve what we want to achieve for flood mitigation and to save any of the mature trees back there and kind of create a nice open space for the town, which is what we accepted as an RTM, was an open space property. So therefore, for all those reasons, including, I'll add another thing, which is traffic on Villa Avenue, especially with the dividers that have been added in there, is tricky and trying to create parking and off-street parking within that property seems treacherous. There's also a crosswalk planned and this would be ADA-compliant trails, so we're talking about handicapped access with no sidewalks on that side of the street. Like much of this project, it seems like we're kind of, the money may be ahead of the plans and the request to this body is ahead of a plan that the neighborhood can see and get behind. So I ask, I did talk to the moderator about potentially postponing this, but we could only postpone it for a month and that's according to town. You know, the new plans wouldn't be ready in a month. So given that, I don't want to stand up here and ask you to postpone it every month for the next however many months, so I think we need to reject this. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Garskov. Is there any other comments from the body? Anyone online from the body, if you have a comment, just put your name in the chat. Representative Colburn.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Colin Colburn, District 8. I would just add that I did ask for any information that we had in terms of communication plans or any previous communication that's gone out to the association to make the households of the association aware of the plans and it did not appear that there was much communication other than communicating with the Board of Managers, which again, anyone who's familiar with these associations, there's usually about four or five people that are pretty actively involved. It sounds like Representative Garskov is pretty involved, but then you have the rest of the community that is pretty much not involved and they will become very involved if they find out plans that they were not aware of that then impacts their neighborhoods. So I too will be voting no on this.
Thank you, Representative Colburn. Any other comments from the body? Seeing none. If there's any members of the public here wishing to speak on this Agenda Item, you can come up to the podium, state your name and your address. You will have two minutes to speak. I will take members from the public that are in person first and then I will move online. If you are online and wish to speak, just put your name in the chat and Fair TV is gathering those names for us. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Douglas Brown. I'm the Chair of the Board of Managers of Brooklyn Park Association. Well, I live at 101 Park Drive. I played with Representative Barrettts on the best Andrew Ward soccer team in high school. I've surveyed a number of the residents in my association. Our association's a 57-home association from Algonquin to Collingwood, along Brookline. We're not in favor of the proposal, even though it certainly has great intentions and if there were some way to maybe table it, which I understand there's not, I think we'd be more supportive of it. The desire from our neighborhood is to keep that property open space. That's the overwhelming consensus of the entire neighborhood. The trees, the open space, it provides a nice natural buffer. The traffic on Villa Avenue is particularly a real problem since I understand that there would be some parking spaces associated with this proposal. That would be disaster. Anyone who drives on Villa knows that especially where the parking would allegedly be is a real problem. There really should be no parking space. There should be no driveways, no additional driveways, no parking on that area of Villa Avenue, particularly with the medians, but even when the medians weren't there. It's a very busy road. It'd be a very bad idea. We do have some safety concerns. It's not primary. The biggest goal is the flood mitigation to that property. I know everyone is aware of the Rooster River issues and...
I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, if you could wrap it up.
I'm coming up on the two minutes.
You are two minutes, yes, thank you.
Bottom line is, the neighborhood would really request that it not be turned into anything other than flood mitigation. There's too much going on with the property as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members from the public that wishing, that are in person, wishing to come speak? Just come up and state your name and address. And you'll have two minutes.
Hi, good evening. Amy Barno, 131 Algonquin. I really appreciate that the spirit of the proposal is to bring further access for people into nature. I work at Connecticut Audubon. I'm in full favor of that. However, we have just had a perpetually challenging situation with the town and communication. I think you all know it. I could go way past two minutes on the history of that. And respectfully, we are trying really hard to focus on finding successful resolution with the town on the Plan B of the flood mitigation project. And I fear that the additional variable of the trail is sort of one more big question mark. We have not seen, it's one more thing. We haven't seen a plan. We hear about parking spots, which I have great, my house abuts that. I have great concerns about parking spots and trails that would go right up to the back of my house. We already are dealing with some safety issues. We've talked to the extensive neighborhood, not just BPA, but along Villa Avenue as well. And there's a lot of concern about trying to put just a tremendous sort of stack of activities on this four-acre property that is also a wetland and open space. And, you know, I wish that we could just ask you guys to postpone the vote until we have a chance to review the plan and weigh in on it as a community, but I hear that that is not an option. And so therefore, you know, regrettably, I think we are, and I speak on behalf of a lot of neighbors that are here tonight, a lot who are not here, and that includes along Villa Avenue as well, who have more concerns than they have support for it. So at this time, we ask you to reject the proposal regretfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barno. Any other members from the public in person that wish to speak? If you come on up to the podium. I don't see anyone else from the public in person. I'm going to move online to the chat. Okay. Well, we'll let Mr. Halleck go first, Matthew Halleck, and then I see Mr. Bishop that you're online. Mr. Bishop is our Conservation Department Director, so we'll let him speak after Mr. Halleck and the public speaks. Mr. Halleck. It might take a minute to unmute.
Hi, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Hi, Matthew Halleck. I live at 6 Somerville Street. I also, I had, I own the building. I had my offices for many years on Tonksasil Road, right there by Villa. And just a couple things. There was just a red flag that I saw in the resolution that this is part of the urbanized neighborhoods of Fairfield and I just didn't know what that was because that's like official. If they have a map somewhere where they're calling neighborhoods urbanized and that's all part of a, sort of a state-run effort to rezone and redefine Fairfield. Fairfield is not a city. It's a big town with a lot of neighborhoods and we have to look at all our code and everything with the maps and stuff and make sure that kind of language is not inserted in our official documentation and definition of... That is, that is Hartford's definition of Fairfield, not Fairfield. So that's just a red flag I have on that. And the other thing is just, speaking of Villa, what, the striping on the roads, whoever Fairfield is hiring for, you know, the white striping down there, it's a disaster now, that road. They have it, it's like in the middle of the road. It means nothing, like the gutter on the side. It's not a bike path. It's not parallel parking. It's just weird. The same thing is true now on Route 1, where they have all this parallel parking where you have to like stand on Route 1 and reverse on Route 1 and open your car door on Route 1 to get into your car. It's ridiculous. And now I see on Old Field Road, it's like a child is doing this. So that's it, those two things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halleck. Any other members of the public online wishing to speak? Put your name in the chat. Okay, any last comments from the public on this item? Great. We're going to move back to the body, but I'm going to let Mr. Bishop, our Conservation Director, I believe is online and may want to speak. He was unable to be here last week, so welcome, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moderator. I just wanted to clear up a few things that I've heard in the comments so far tonight. As many of you know, Tim Bishop, Conservation Director. The department controls and manages 152 parcels in town that total over 1,300 acres. Many of those have trails. They're all considered open space. And this grant is for the design and construction of the trail on open space, just like all the other trails you've probably hiked before. So right now, there is no plan, only a concept. That plan would get ironed out through the review process, design process. So for those who have said we haven't seen the plans, because there isn't one, that's what this money's going to cover. Also, the intent in the concept is to have two handicap parking spaces only in the Villa Avenue area. No other parking spaces will be, would be designed or allowed. The intent is to permit, I don't want to use the word ADA, but handicap elderly wheelchair accessible path through open space since the only real path that is wheelchair accessible for elderly and handicap is behind the senior center. So that's the intent of the entire design. And I'm advocating for those elderly wheelchair-bound and handicapped that would like to enjoy some green space in our town. So I just wanted to get that out there for consideration. I believe the Agenda Item is to accept the money and I think other opinions and concerns can be ironed out in the permitting process. Thank you. Free time.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Any other members from the body wishing to speak that haven't already spoken on this item? In the chat, if anyone from the body, Representative Garskov would like to speak again.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Josh Garskov, District 5. Yeah, I think the plans that were being referred to are the Plan B for the flood mitigation, that we have not been able to see those and really understand what we're getting into and therefore, we're not really comfortable as a neighborhood to accept the idea of trails mixed in with them. And no one is against people being able to access, you know, nature on trails, whatever their abilities may or may not be. We're dealing with the realities of this particular tiny site and what makes sense to the neighborhood and to the community and to the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. I see someone in the public. We've already gone to public comment, unfortunately, so we only go to public comment one time before we move back to the body. Anyone else from the body wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, uh, we're gonna take it to a vote. I'm gonna start by trying to say it and then we'll see if we have to go to a roll call. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, opposed. Opposed. Any abstentions? Uh, Representative Ratsky abstained. I believe everyone was a no except for Representative Ratsky, which Representative Ratsky abstained. If I'm incorrect, please comment in the chat, representatives or so say. Um, that motion fails. Thank you. Moving on to the next item. Okay. Ms. Barretta, we see you online. Unfortunately, we moved your item to the end of our agenda. Um, yeah, I should have moved it a little less further. I don't think we can change that now, unfortunately. Attorney Pierce, can we, someone make a motion to move it earlier? Yeah. Um, can I have a motion to move Representative, or yes, Representative Pistilli, seconded by Representative Carroll? Um, Representative Pistilli has made a motion to consider, go back to Agenda Item Three, um, which is to consider Rosemary Barretta. Um, do I have a motion, uh, to consider, or all those in favor of, uh, putting it on the table now signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. Okay, we'll consider that. Um, so now we'll make a motion to, uh, let me go back to the wording, to consider Rosemary Barretta for reappointment to the Ethics Commission. Um, all those, uh, uh, motion approved, Representative Zesima, seconded by Representative McDermott. Uh, welcome, Ms. Barretta. I think, hopefully you're unmuted.
Oh, thank you so much. My apologies. I'm sorry. I was running late to, to, uh, the Zoom meeting.
No, no problem. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Um, if you just wanna tell us a little bit about yourself and why you wanna continue to serve on the Ethics Commission? Is she muted again? Uh, sorry, Ms. Barretta, someone muted you again.
How about now?
Oh, perfect. We can, now, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I was just saying, I feel like, you know, we, we're just getting our work started. Um, I began in February and, uh, we hit the ground running. Uh, there's a couple of new members with me as well, and I'm very excited. Um, I'm an attorney, uh, by way of background, currently I work for the Town of Greenwich as an Assistant Town Council, and my background is in employment law and labor. And I feel I'm a perfect fit for the commission and I can really help the town, uh, with, with these issues that, that are arising.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Barretta? Uh, Representative Shea.
Hi, Chris Shea, Rep., uh, Representative from District Two. Thank you for your willingness to, uh, continue to serve on this very important commission. My question is, um, are you available to attend the regularly scheduled meetings?
Yes, uh, tonight just didn't work out. I had a family emergency, but the regular scheduled, you mean RTM meetings?
No, your ethics meetings.
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, definitely. I've attended all of them so far. Absolutely.
Thank you for your commitment to that. Are there any other, uh, comments or questions from the body on this item? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on the reappointment of Rosemary Barretta to the Ethics Commission? Seeing none. We'll take it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. Uh, congratulations, Ms. Barretta. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Have a great evening, everyone, and thank you for, for your work as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Five. To hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolve that a donation of a portion of land at 785 Old Field Road to the Town of Fairfield to be maintained as undeveloped open space by the Conservation Department be and hereby is accepted and further resolve that the First Selectman be and hereby is authorized to sign and any documents in furtherance of said agreement. Do I have a motion to approve, Representative Waldron, seconded by Representative O'Neill? Is there any discussion on this item? Representative Carroll.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, Chris Carroll, District Eight. Um, through you, I think the question can start with Mr. Bishop. Uh, strategically, I don't know that I've seen anything from the town that says, hi, here's how we're gonna treat these type of donations. A developer buys a large piece of property, builds a house, probably makes a significant profit, and then any of the land they don't want, that they can't sell, they donate it and then they don't have to pay the tax on it anymore. The town's giving up somewhere between five and $14,500. I saw different calculations in the response, and thank you for getting that through today. There's, there's really no benefit to the town in taking it. The town can't, the, the property can't be developed. The town, if any issues come up with it, if there's any liability associated with it, the town is taking that on. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand. The town gives up tax revenue, takes on the liability, and the use of the land, the best I can ascertain, does not change. So I'm wondering why, what is our strategy for doing this? Why do we do it? Is there a point that we say, no, we won't accept it? Cause I was talking to some neighbors who live, um, in, in an area town that they have a common wetland, that they all pay the tax on. They said, so we could just donate the land? I said, apparently, and then you don't have the tax liability anymore. So I'm trying, why, why do we do this if there's no benefit to the town? But that's my question. I think it's directed at Mr. Bishop.
We'll start with Mr. Bishop, our Director of Conservation.
Thank you. Um, well, a few, a few things. It adds, uh, land to our open space, which is available to the public. Uh, currently, that's not available to the public when it's privately owned. Uh, secondly, uh, as I relayed to moderator through email this afternoon, um, the Conservation Department would not be, uh, have any jurisdiction as title wetlands, so the example you, uh, explained, I'm not sure if that's title or inland. Uh, they're two different things, uh, as far as wetlands go and jurisdictional boundaries. Uh, but in this case, um, the state under the DEP would would, uh, have, excuse me, jurisdiction over title wetlands. So should a permit be, uh, initiated by a property owner? The town would not, uh, as far as the Conservation Department would not be, uh, allowed to be involved in that process. So by adding it to our open space, which we have um, in that section, over 220 acres, uh, which has not been acquired by the town with all the other adjacent parcels in the last 60 years, um, now would be a good time to do that with a willing owner. Um, so one, we add that to our publicly accessible, uh, inventory, as well as have initial uh, regulatory and jurisdictional rights to that parcel. Hopefully that addresses your question.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Um, anyone else from the administration wanna answer anything related to this? Okay, um, Representative Georgiades.
Drew Georgiades, uh, District Nine. Um, I've lived in town 39, 35 years and I live in the beach area. Um, and, uh, my question goes back to Mr. Bishop. I looked at the property on the map and it looks like it's the backyard of, uh, uh, one of those deep lots, um, that runs along Old Field. And, um, I'm pretty familiar with that area. I go back to the old dump behind, um, Old Field. I don't see any way to access that. So my question to you is, um, when you define open space, will we, the town, just keep accepting these donations, um, as people's backyard becomes more and more of a wetland? Even though there's no real, um, ability for the public to access it? And the donations will increase, the tax revenue will go down, and really, I, I don't, I don't see any public benefit to this one or all the neighbors and the precedent that this will set. So if you can address that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Georgiades. Um, Mr. Bishop?
Thank you. Um, I, for the record, I approached, uh, this property owner, knowing that we, uh, have adjacent, uh, property. Um, and access is available through this entire parcel. I've walked with waiters, uh, knee-deep through this, through the, uh, Spartina. Uh, um, we have two osprey nesting platforms since I I've, uh, got here that have installed, uh, in this area. Um, access is, is available from other locations, uh, Enos, I think it's Enos Lane or Enos Court to the east, uh, to the west, I'm sorry, as well as the adjacent parcels to the south. Um, this isn't obviously a, 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 not too many people that I know are walking in tidal marshes, but, um, it is, it, it's private property right now, so no one can, uh, cross it, should they want to, from multiple locations. And, uh, I, I, I see more value in it, uh, acquiring it at this time with a willing, a property owner to do a lot split than, um, than waiting for the future. Um, the department formed in 1972 and acquired hundreds of acres that make up the rest of this open space. Uh, and this parcel was not acquired for some reason at the time. My intent was to pursue the current owner, who was, uh, kind and willing to, um, to, to work with us and, and get it this, uh, get it this far. Its value to me is, I mean, I know the, uh, tax issue is concerned for others, but my objective is to increase the town's inventory of open space for natural resource reasons and, uh, tidal marshes are invaluable. We're losing them and we have, uh, would now have more control of almost two more acres with little to no internal costs other than legal fees. Um, and, you know, there is, I understand there's a dollar amount on loss of tax revenue. But that's less of my concern, uh, and more within my purview to acquire and manage and maintain more open space.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Bishop. We do have Emmeline Harrigan, the Town Plan and Zoning Director here, uh, raising her hand to answer this question as well.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Um, Emmeline Harrigan, I'm the Planning Director, uh, for Fairfield. Um, I'm also, uh, the Flood Plane Administrator for the town. Um, I just wanna add to, um, Conservation Director Bishop's comments that tidal marshlands are really important flood storage areas. Um, in addition, I think the town is really the best steward of these properties. Um, my office is who has to maintain or issue enforcement orders for folks who fill their tidal marshlands, and it unfortunately happens more frequently than you would imagine. So, um, I would just, um, request that, um, you know, in, in, on behalf of, um, Director Bishop, that, uh, really, you know, his conservation staff is really the best to maintain this really important ecological treasure that we have in town.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the body on this item? Uh, Representative McCabe.
Uh, Michelle McCabe, District Four. I just wanted to say that I'm gonna be voting in favor of this item. Um, if you, I know our town is very concerned about development, and when you think about available space that is there to protect wildlife and wetlands that you don't necessarily even want the public to be able to use or access. The town is the only entity that has an interest and in the ability to actually acquire and maintain that land. Cause private citizens usually acquire land in order to develop it. And so I think it's incumbent upon communities like ours, and I'm really proud that Fairfield actually looks at properties that we should acquire in order to, um, keep our community safe, in order to mitigate flood, in order to protect wildlife. Um, and personally, I'm happy to sacrifice tax revenue for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative McCabe. Any other comments from the body on this item? Uh, seeing none. I'm gonna move to public comment. If there's any members from the public wishing to speak on this item, you can come up to the podium and state your name and address, and you will have two minutes. I will consider people in the, um, person first before we move on to people online. Any members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none. Uh, seeing none online either, I believe.
Uh, what was that? Oh, oh.
Okay, so Mr. Hallick has asked to speak. I would just remind, um, members of the public, if you want to speak, please, um, state your name, and when you get on, you need to also state your name and your address. Thank you. Mr. Hallick?
Hi, thank you very much. I live on Somerville Street, like, two blocks away, right there, and I've been walking my dogs there in that open space on Pine Creek for 30 years. And it's great that we have that. There's just a lot going on there, and it's more of a stewardship thing, that we wanna make sure that finally, can we have the Conservation Department an expanded budget for Parks and Rec to be stewards of all that open space? Because not right now. It's DPW is doing its public works and they're maintaining it, and that's not what they do. And it's not being done well at all. I mean, for starters, there's a major, major tick infestation and all the way back there going up to the landfill. I went out there with my dogs. We came back with 11 ticks on us. There is, um, Chinese hogweed, which is a, and, and hemlock, very, very toxic plants that are, uh, unfettered running back there because we don't have the right supervision. And then if you go, you can go line by line through a lot of that area where it deals with, um, Old Field Park and the chain link fences that were put up when Child's Garden moved in, and they're moving out next year. So we can recover Old Field Park there and take down some of those fences. And on the other side of the street, they put up a gate to block the trail that goes up to the marsh there, the upper part. You can see all the way to downtown. It's beautiful. And it's closed off for no reason. And they go all the way back to the landfill and there's major problems there. Uh, we can't really talk about it, but, um, there's a solar panel. There's a solar system on top of the landfill. And that's very dangerous. Landfills emit methane and solar panels emit heat, a lot of it. And it's a very combustible, dangerous situation right now. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hallick. Um, I'd just like to remind members of the public that our chat, um, is for commenting that you would like to be recognized. None of the members here are seeing anything that, um, it's hard for us to read, so we're not seeing what you're putting in the chat. So if you wish to have that in the record, you need to comment that you would like to speak, um, and not make comments in the chat, please. Also, I ask that members of the public, um, stick to the topic at hand, um, would be appreciated. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Please comment your name in the chat. Anyone in person? Seeing none. Thank you. We'll move back to, uh, the body. Any other comments from the body on this topic? Seeing none. We'll take it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Representative Carroll? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Item Six, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolve that the Town of Fairfield authorizes the Board of Education of the Town of Fairfield to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the new Timothy Dwight Elementary School Project. And further resolve that the Timothy Dwight Elementary School Building Committee is hereby established at the building as the- as the Building Committee with regard to the Timothy Dwight Elementary School Project. And further resolve that the Town of Fairfield hereby authorize at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Timothy Dwight Elementary School Project. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Carson, seconded by Representative O'Neill. Is there any discussion on this item? Representative Georgiades? Please come up to the podium.
Drew Georgiades, District Nine. I'd like to make a motion to strike the word "elementary" in this item, in all instances where it is used, and replace it with the words Timothy Dwight School instead of Timothy Dwight Elementary School.
So I believe there's four locations where "elementary" is listed, and the Board of Selectmen unfortunately approved it. They amended it, and we didn't get that on our agenda. Do I have a second? Representative Zesema? Is there any discussion on the amendment to strike the words "elementary" from the resolution? Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. We're voting on the amendment to strike the words "elementary" from the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Representative Shea? Abstentions? The amendment carries. Moving back to the initial, or moving back to the agenda item as amended? Is there any comment from the body on this item? Representative Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And through you, a question, and I see that Board President Peterson's here, so it's probably to you. I am in favor of forming the Building Committee as soon as we can, and sort this out for the citizens and the students there. What I'm not sure about in this motion, or, is that in our last conversation last week, there was, even though there are opinions of, should we build a new school? Should we fix the school that's there? And I believe you're doing your due diligence on sorting that out. In the fourth section of this, it says we're resolving to go ahead and prepare schematics. Schematics for what? Is that just for a new school? Or you're preparing schematics for a reno and a new school? And I'd like to understand, again, it goes back to my concern of, well, we've already decided anyway. So what would the schematics be? When would they be done? And would they be done after you get the research and analysis back? Or would they be done for both options?
Thank you. We have Board of Education Chair Jeff Peterson here to answer that for us. Welcome, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Jeff Peterson, Board of Ed Chair. I appreciate the question. As I mentioned in the questions Q and A last week, the thing about schematic design is in, is in the law. It's, a building committee is required to at least prepare schematic designs for a building project. To answer your question about whether there's already been a decision made, no. We are doing our due diligence. We are working with the Sviggalsen Partners, who we have hired, who the town has hired, to conduct an evaluation of multiple scenarios. And we will be getting a report from them near the end of August, I believe. And at that point, we will have, you know, have more data with which to make a final decision. Now, the Board of Ed has already made a request of the town. But I expect that the debate about what exactly is going to go on that space is going to, is going to, you know, burst back into flame, and we'll talk about it between multiple boards. But no, the decision has not been made yet. The schematic design will likely come after we make a decision about what to do with that property. But we will not be able to kind of move in that direction unless we have a Building Committee to hire the appropriate professions. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but that's a...
Okay, thank, thank you. That's the question. Do you have a follow-up question, Representative Carroll?
I do, and again, I'm not trying to be difficult on this. I agree we need a Building Committee, we need to do it right away. What I'd like to understand is, most likely, the design would be, it either would be, or would not be, for a new building. I, I just don't feel like I'm getting a firm commitment. Are we doing schematics for only a new building? Or are we going to wait till the decision's made, and then decide what schematics to do?
So the Building Committee will ultimately decide, but the Town Boards will make a decision about which, which direction to go in. So we, like, there's no, no one is asking for schematic designs now on all the potential scenarios. No one is asking for schematic designs now on either a new build or renovation. We are still waiting for the, for the information to come back from our consultants, so we can have that discussion again. So I, I, I don't want to say that the Building Committee is going to decide to do one thing or another until, until that committee is established and is staffed, and has had a chance to review the data, and, you know, and we've had, you know, a more fulsome discussion between town bodies about what the educational needs are, and how those intersect with what the town is willing to fund.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Representative Waldron?
Just short. Cindy Waldron, District Three. I guess, Madam Moderator, through you to Mr. Peterson. Hi. I think I'm a little confused. This schematic, will we be bound to this schematic? Or is this, like, a schematic to get the process moving? I think that's where I, like, it's confusing. I mean, I want to approve it, but I think we're all getting a little stuck there with this schematic.
Mr. Peterson?
Oh, sorry, what did I say? Oh.
All right, I do want to, I do want to stress that, that the legislation requires, the law requires, that a Building Committee ask for at least schematic design. So we, we have to have, that if we're having a Building Committee, that has to be part of the charge. And looking back at, at past charges for past elementary school projects, that's been a standard feature. I, I do not believe in any way that asking for a Building Committee to pursue schematic design commits us, at this point in time, to a specific project, if that's your fundamental concern.
That is my fundamental concern.
Thank you. And we also have Ms. George commenting over there. I don't know if you want to add anything, but I see Mr. Papa George agreeing to that comment. Thank you. Any other comments from the body on this item? Representative Shea?
Representative Shea, District Two. Through you, Madam Moderator, to Mr. Peterson. Is there a financial commitment that we're making tonight for the cost of the schematic design?
Mr. Peterson probably can answer that. I'm not sure if he's actually the most appropriate one, but go ahead.
No.
If I may follow up. So, so we're, we're committing to a, a Building Committee tonight to request a schematic design. So is there a step that I'm missing between when this Building Committee is seated and they request a schematic design? Would, would there be a request of the RTM to appropriate funds for this schematic design at that point?
I'm going to call Acting for Selectmen Vitale up to speak to this, but we will, there will be no funds spent before this body approves spending of funds. Welcome, Acting for Selectmen Vitale.
Thank you. The item for you tonight is not a funding request. And in order for a Building Committee to move forward on going out to bid and getting schematic designs, they would need funding to do that. So the next step, after we get the reports back from the feasibility, school feasibility study, I would imagine it would go back to the Board of Ed, Board of Selectmen for review. The Board of Education, as Mr. Peterson has, has already shared, has a capital request for a new build with ECC classrooms. They may choose to move that forward to the Board of Selectmen for funding request, or based on the information that comes back from the school feasibility study, they may revisit it and alter their request. I think it's important to note that this ed specs is going to be driving a lot of what the Building Committee is going to be looking to build. And that comes directly from the Board of Education. So this is, this is, the process is different than it has been in the past. Typically, we would have a funding request first, and then the Building Committee would come. We took a different approach with this. And Mr. Papa George can speak to it. The Board of Education requested this come before the Board of Selectmen for approval, just to get the ducks in a row for when we have a better idea of what is going to be moving forward, that we can get volunteers to the Building Committee, get the, the group together. The funding request is likely to be coming, you know, early in the fall in preparation for the capital planning workshop. And once the funding's secured, then the Building Committee can move forward with getting the schematic designs. The schematic designs is, as Mr. Peterson said, part of the process for state statute for going and looking for reimbursement for school construction funding. So this is not really binding us to a new school necessarily, or binding us to a specific dollar amount. It is really just a step that needs to be taken in order for a school construction project to move forward, and for the town to apply for state funding.
Thank you. Representative Colburn?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Colin Colburn, District Eight. I, too, am in favor, conceptually, of the Building Committee. I think it needs to happen, absolutely, no, no questions asked. I think where I'm getting a little stuck is on, is on the timing portion, which we keep talking about. And I, and I under, one of the things that I, that I heard in our committee meeting was that we wanted to do this, in part, because we could tell the state that we formed a Building Committee early in order to get, in order to get funding. That, conceptually, again, makes sense to me. I think the thing that's hanging me up is that it sounds like the statute is expecting that you have a concept in mind to build the schematics, right? So there's kind of like a, there's like two different sides of that, that I'm, I'm having a little bit of trouble writing. I'm not sure if someone can speak to that, because it, it just seems like we're kind of going, not, not going against the statute, but we're, we're, we're not doing it in order that the statute is kind of advising on.
Thank you. I'm going to call up Mr. Papa George, our Executive Director of Operations at Fairfield Public Schools. Welcome, Mr. Papa George.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. So yes, this is unusual for the Town of Fairfield to put a Building Committee before funding requests and everything else. It is not unusual for other towns in the state. What, what usually, what happens in other towns is they, once they decide that a project needs to happen at a school, before anything else is decided, they put together a Building Committee. That Building Committee is used to do kind of what the working group has done so far, is look at the property, look at that. As for applying to the state with the prints and everything else, in order to do that, we would have to come before all town bodies and get the town to approve the funding for the actual building project prior to us even being able to go to the state. One of the requirements, the checkboxes for the state, is that we have to show that the town has funded and approved the project, and that's when the state will say, okay, we accept it, and we will offer our reimbursement rates at what the town gets for reimbursement. So this, as has been said before, this has nothing to do with funding at this time. This is to get a working group together, start getting people involved, start getting the group together, so that we have a Building Committee, and as the Sviggals comes back with their projects and their, their recommendations, it's a Building Committee that can look at those, as well as the Board of Education, the Board of Selectmen, the RTM, can all look at those recommendations. And you'll see the Building Committee, once formed up here before you, saying that we've evaluated what the working group has done, we've taken into what the Board of Education is doing, we have the ed specs, and this is what we're recommending as a Building Committee, and this is the funding that we're requesting at that time. So it's the Building Committee that will request the funding for a project to move forwards, if that helps.
Thank you. Any other members in the person that would like to speak? I see we have two members online that would like to speak. Representative Ludwigzak?
Christine Ludwigzak, District Eight. Thank you, Madam Moderator, to, I guess, speak, in addition to what Representative Colburn just shared, or just expressed some concern around. I think with the third part of this item, is it possible, regarding the schematic drawings, is it possible to move forward with this item, amending it to take that piece out, so that we could move forward with the Building Committee without the, without the drawings, where there's a question of what the exact project that they're creating drawings for would be, until that's resolved? I don't know who might be able to speak to that part.
We'll have Mr. Papa George address that.
So the wording in your, in your motion is state-required, all the wording in there. We can make minor adjustments, like the name of the school, the grades of the school, but to take the schematic design out, as Mr. Peterson said, then we will not be meeting the state legislation. And we would have to come before you, again, to get permission, basically just to do a schematic design, which is why we put it in there. Again, as said before, we're not asking for a schematic design. At this point, there will be a full evaluation of all the information prior to moving forwards, and in order to do a schematic design, the team would have to come before you and ask for funding to move that forwards. So no schematic design will be done. We're just putting together the team to get that schematic design moving, and the funding request moving, once it's decided the direction to go.
Thank you.
Yes, I was just going to say, thank you, that, that does make sense. I think it's very confusing with the wording, as the motion is, is written. But if you are coming back again for funding for the drawings, then I, I guess that does make a little more sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Longo?
Hi, Melissa Longo, District One. Thank you, Angeles and Jeff, for clarifying some of our concerns. I just want to say that I am 100% in support of forming a Building Committee. I think the residents, especially, you know, Dwight parents and students have been waiting quite a long time for something to be developed, and I'm excited for this to go forward, and I will be approving this. So thank you.
From the public present that would like to speak to this item? If so, come on up, state your name and address. You'll have two minutes. You guys might be able to sit down for a little bit, because we don't answer to the public. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lauren Efrin, 241 Burr Street. I'm the former PTA president for the last two years, and the PTAC president-elect. I just want to state that this whole process has been very confusing for us, as the public, and on behalf of the Dwight community, to follow along. So I understand the confusion on your behalf. I appreciate all the questions and the healthy debate that you engaged in at your last meeting, and again, tonight. I think they're all fair and warranted. I am here to ask that you approve the formation of the Timothy Dwight School Building Committee. We've waited long enough. Last October, this board approved the $1 million for the town working group. It was to assess the Dwight location, along with numerous other locations. While there was some positive things that came out of that project, we're still waiting, unfortunately, 10 months later, for the actual schematics and the real numbers, which was the whole reason for the development of that town working group. If we wait any longer, we are risking not only time, but money as well. There was a 6% inflation that was built into the Board of Ed's original request for seed funding. We have now surpassed that, a full year later. We wait again. If we miss the town bonding resolutions, if we miss applying to, for state reimbursements, we are leaving money on the table. I think we, it is time for us to move forward, to get the real schematics that we've been waiting for, and then you guys will ultimately be the ones to decide whether or not to approve it. But I, I ask that we, we not wait any longer. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Efron. Any other members from the public present wishing to speak? I see none present in person, anyone online? Just put your name in the chat. Seeing none, I'll move back to the body on this item. Any other comments on this item from the body? Seeing none, I'll take it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Moving on to item number seven. Representative McCabe? Thank you. Representative McCabe has made a motion to waive the reading, and Representative Colburn has graciously seconded it. All those in favor of waiving the reading signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Or I'm sorry, opposed abstentions? Great, that motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Seven, which is whether to authorize the first select person to enter into a memorandum of agreement or other similar agreements with the Connecticut Municipal Development Authority? Moved by Representative Georgiades, seconded by Representative Carroll. Is there any discussion on this item? Anyone from the body online? Just put your name in the chat. Representative Colburn?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Colin Colburn, District Eight. I know you're all sick of hearing me on this subject. I am too. So I will make it very brief. So I, I said during the public hearing, you know, I've been frustrated by a lot of the development and, and what I view as overdevelopment in some cases within our town and the lack of control that we have due to, due to some state statutes that we've become too familiar with. I'm sponsoring this, and I'm going to be voting yes tonight, because Fairfield needs a new, a new approach to reclaim local control. We can no longer do it alone. We need support from a range of public and private partners. My hope is that tonight is the first of many steps that we take in order to manage our growth proactively and thoughtfully. We have heard some very legitimate concerns, some concerns that I had initially when I signed on to co-sponsor this, about what opting into the Connecticut Municipal Development Authority means, and I want to speak to a few of those. First is that we've heard CMDA is going to undermine Fairfield's local zoning authority. This is probably the first thing I asked a question to David Corrus about, and the answer is CMDA is not going to override our zoning. The only way a district gets certified is if the Town Planning and Zoning Commission approves the zoning in the first place. If they do not, then nothing happens. Another concern I often hear is that the CMDA is a Trojan horse to push the state's high-density and affordable housing agenda. This is a legitimate concern, in my view. I do have concerns with where the state is trying to push development onto towns like Fairfield, but CMDA is focused narrowly on transit-oriented development, also known as TOD, and only in areas that the town designates, like around Fairfield Black Rock Station. Every project that is within that district has to comply with local zoning and planning goals, and it's the town, not CMDA or the state, that decides on what gets built. And things are going to get built. We all know that. The last thing that I wanted to address is that, you know, I think that a lot of, a lot of people have concerns about the obligations or the strings attached to opting into CMDA. And what I've learned is that opting in and certifying a TOD district that we designate is not a mandate. It's, there's no mandate to build more housing. It gets us access instead to funding to things that I think are critically important and that we do not do, do enough of in our town, which are things like traffic studies, school capacity analyses, infrastructure upgrades. We could go on. This is really critical work in order to get funding, to be able to do these things. I do have two recommendations to the administration and the first selectman, assuming that this does pass tonight. First is that the, that the administration and first selectman request time on an upcoming zoning and planning, planning and zoning agenda to discuss CMDA, to identify housing districts for certification, and prioritize the kinds of projects or studies we pursue with CMDA support. I think having this relationship, this tight relationship with planning and zoning is going to be very important to the success of leveraging CMDA. Second is that I hope that we wait to seek CMDA certification of housing, of a housing district or housing districts until after planning and zoning adopts the new plan of conservation and development. That way, CMD resources can help us implement what is our current long-term vision. I'll close with, CMDA is not a silver bullet. In fact, it's really, I, it's, it's kind of been overstated in the impact, I think, that it might have, good or bad. In fact, it's just one tool in the toolbox that I keep on mentioning, the scant toolbox that our town currently has, to help us plan and manage growth more on our terms. CMDA gives us access to funding, data, technical support, that's going to help reduce pressure on our heavily volunteer-run town. I think that's something that we sometimes forget, that, you know, our town has great people that are part of it, but it is a lot of on the backs of volunteers. This is not about encouraging more development, full stop. It's about managing what's already coming. So let's use the moratorium that we're currently in to plan ahead rather than be reactive later, and if we work together on things like this, we can guide Fairfield's growth to reflect the values and priorities of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Colburn. Any other comments from the body on this item? If you have a comment from the body, please put your name in the chat. Representative Longo.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I think that we all have received the same amount of emails over this CMDA partnership, and, you know, the two that really stood out to me were from our own Town Planning and Zoning Board. Two members of the board, one who used to serve on the RTM stating that they themselves do not think that now is the time, it's a little premature, and I tend to agree with them. I think that this is not the right move for Fairfield, seeing as all the developments that we currently have. Yes, we are at the moratorium, but look at where we are. Our town's infrastructure cannot handle anymore. I don't think that we have been using, you know, certain state statutes responsibly with regards to certain housing developments and how it's going to affect our town and the environment. And I think that this, until we have more information and until we have received the reprieve from the moratorium, I think it's premature to say that we should join in this effort. I do firmly believe that this will chip away at our local zoning boards to make decisions on behalf of our town, and we are severely handcuffed as it is with the jurisdiction from the state. So I'm not comfortable with this at this time, so I will not be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Longo. Any other members from the body wishing to speak on this item? I see none at the moment, so we'll move to public comment. If, we'll start with members that are present in public here, and if you just state your name and your address, you'll have two minutes to speak.
Sure, I'm Stephen Rosado, 85 Old Stratfield Road. I'm also the Chairman of the Economic Development Commission. I'm, had a lot of prepared statements, and Colin all uniquely said most of them. I do think people against this really view this as it's a gateway to development. We don't have to develop anything we don't want to. This just gives us resources for planning. What we don't have is a definitive plan going forward. And two of the things I pulled out, some data here, Connecticut is the seventh oldest state in the country. I have kids who are fresh out of college. It is really hard for them to envision buying a house anytime soon, and we need to address this, and I think the CMDC does that. Their purposes do that. They're not here to develop stuff just to make things more affordable. And as far as getting more houses built, we just don't do that well in this town, in this town or even the state. The state of Connecticut is 46th in building permits per thousand people. We are, we issue one per thousand people. And by the way, the leader is North Carolina with 5.34. But I think this just gives us tools to help us plan to do what we want as a town. This doesn't bypass anything. We're just, it's supporting our taxpayers for the vision that we want. This is not a license to go and build stuff. And the argument against 830G, this has nothing to do with 830G. The CMDC, you might as well blame them for the weather. We don't like the heat and humidity, but it has nothing to do with it. They're two totally separate things.
Thank you, Mr. Rosado. Any other members from the public? Just come on up to the podium, state your name and address.
Jeff Randolph, it's good to see everybody under better circumstances. Oh, get closer, too tall. It's good to see everybody under better circumstances. I'm a member of the, you guys are my constituents. I'm a member of planning and zoning.
Mr. Randolph, just state your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, 20 Cedarwood Lane. You all are my constituents. I'm a member of planning and zoning. And I've just, I've started, I've been on the commission for about a year and a half. And a question I get every week, we meet every week and sometimes more often than every week, is why doesn't the commission do something about 830Gs and the traffic? Those are the two things I get all the time. And why don't we take control? But Fairfield's lack of proactive planning has left the town vulnerable to 830G developments. And as a commissioner, I took an oath of office, which means something to me. I can only legally vote to deny 830G projects if there's substantial evidence in the public record demonstrating that the proposed proposals pose a significant adverse impact on health and safety. That's a high legal bar. And across Connecticut, there's been 44 appeals of 830Gs, 42 of them have been denied. And too often, some believe that simply saying no is enough, but saying no is not planning, it's the direct cause of these oversized, poorly-located 830Gs. I really hate these things. They're awful, but we need the housing, and we got to follow the law. Development housing patterns are shaped by third-rate developers, not the community, and that's the absolute opposite of local control that we've ceded. And, but it's also what the opponents of this claiming they're fighting for, and that's why I strongly urge the RTM to vote yes on joining the CMDA. This is a voluntary program that gives towns the technical support that we need. Our, our staff is small, and planning resources are limited. CMDA empowers us to act rather than react, which is what we've been doing, while preserving our local control. What the CMDA is-
Mr. Randolph, if you just wrap it up, it's been two minutes. Thank you.
I emailed this to, to, to the clerk.
Wonderful. It's going to be in the minutes of the clerk.
So let me just say, planning is how we protect the town. Our zoning code is outdated. It assumes that housing is only for affluent people. The CMDA gives us tools to respond. So let's stop reacting. Opponents offer no viable alternatives. Their message is not now, maybe later, wait and see, but delay has already cost us. Now that we have a chance to catch up, the CMDA resolution allows the town to create locally-controlled developments. Rejecting CMDA means continuing to plan by lawsuit. Joining the CMDA means-
Thank you, Mr. Randolph. I'm sorry to cut you off. Yeah. Thank you. Any other members from the public that wish to speak? Put your name in the chat. I believe Mr. Hallack is online wishing to speak regarding this item.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Matthew Hallack, resident Fairfield. Absolutely not to this, I spoke at the last meeting on the CMDA on July 10th. It was just days before we lost Bill Gerber, and he, remember, he led our state, I talked about it then, we didn't know that he was so gravely ill, but he led our state to victory against that House of Cards HB 5002 bill with tremendous pressure. And alongside the women from Fairfield, by the way, Alexis Harrison and Catherine Braun and others, New Kane and Greenwich, where Lamont is from, and this CMDA is the same seed as that defeated bill. And we are obligated by law, I mean, in my opinion, to follow Bill Gerber's vision. He was voted into office, and this is corporate welfare. It's built on a foundation of self-dealing for the construction industry. They've already gone through our code, and once it meets their specs, they're going to hook us up with their developers. And this gets back, you know, when, you know, our specs of who we want, we're trying to run a tight ship here. There's dark money LLCs, we don't know the principals and officers of a company, they haven't provided full proof of insurance, there's a, where their financing is coming from, and we, it's not fair to ask us to drop our standards for that to allow their developers, who don't meet our standards, to come into our town and do what they want to do. And remember, this is done through bonds, all right? So they have to go to a bonding commission, of which Senator Tony Wang sits on the bonding commission, so thumbs down from him seems like it would kill the whole thing. And so they're using our money to subsidize these projects that we don't even really want. And on top of which, the plans are all wrong, the maps are wrong, we're in a flood zone. You look, we're looking at a 2015 map is in the books right now, and the other one from the POCD that the vendor did is very inadequate. All of Route One is in a flood zone, all right? And now-
Mr. Hallack, if you could wrap it up, it's been-
Thank you very much. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members from the public wishing to speak? Catherine Braun is online.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm trying to get my video working.
We can hear you now, Ms. Braun. If you state your name and your address, you'll have two minutes.
Okay, thanks. Catherine Braun, 245 Syrah Ridge Avenue. I'm on the zoning commission, and I just want to point out that it's not poor planning that exposes us to 8-30G. There's a long story behind 830G, which is, I don't have time to go into now, but it has nothing to do with poor planning. Our commission has been very aggressive in expanding all of our regulations, including the TOD zone, as well as middle housing regulations and density height down in the downtown area as well as the metro center area. We don't need this right now, and there are strings attached. There is no point in joining this program, which would subject the area that is chosen, or areas that are chosen for housing development to oversight by a state agency. That is, that is something the Planning and Zoning Commission should be doing, and we have not really been involved in this process at all. We're involved right now in finalizing our next 10-year plan of conservation and development. We're also going through the remainder of the 8-30G surge of applications that came in before our moratorium, and we also have a couple thousand units of apartments in random developments around town that have not been built yet, that are approved or in process of being approved. We need to see where that all lands up before we start entering a new program to add a lot of density and housing, subject to the approval of a state agency. Yes, we don't have to do what they want, and then we won't get the money. What is the point of joining if we're not going to get the money? That is the whole purpose of this. So I see no point in joining right now. I think we should wait a few months, try to involve the Town Plan and Zoning Commission in the process, because we are the land use agency of our town. So that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Braun. Any other members of the public present or in the chat? Please put your name in the chat. Seeing none, we're going to move back to members of the body. We have Representative Pastilli.
Sharon Pastilli, District Five. I just wanted to add to Representative Colburn's comments that it's our opportunity to receive funding for the tools in the toolbox. So if we can have the state pay for a hammer or a screwdriver, it's a good thing.
Thank you, Representative Georgiades. Okay, Representative Zesma.
Liz Zesma, District Four. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I want to rise in support of this, but to also correct the record. So Representative Longo said that we are currently, and I'm paraphrasing, I'm sorry, either handcuffed or bound by statutory obligations. We do not have any such constraint on us right now. We're in a moratorium, so we now have two things in our favor, 100% local control and planning, the planning part of TPZ. The other thing that has been asked a couple of times, and I think mentioned in emails, was where does the TPZ come into this process? Now, Emmeline Harrigan answered that question last week, asked by Representative Steele, and I, with the moderator's permission, is there anything to add that would help this body understand that this is not something that's bypassing TPZ? It's a-
Yep, Ms. Harrigan from Town Plan and Zoning Director, if you want to come on up. It looks like Mr. Corrus from the CMDA may also have some additions to this.
I, I think we can, Emmeline Harrigan, Planning Director, Town of Fairfield, I think we can kind of answer it jointly. So as, you can, you can start with Part A, and then I'll go to Part B?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate, it's only the first step, right? In every community that we work, there is a long process, TPZ is involved. There may not even be any future action to take, because your current zoning may, may be able to check the box. We just haven't looked at it yet, because we don't until we get through this first step. And so, there is absolutely plenty of opportunity for TPZ to be involved as much as they want. We're just not there yet. That's what this process triggers. There's no map, there's no designation, there's no project, there, there's no nothing, until we take this first step. And then, happy to go to TPZ, I think that was a great suggestion, I can't remember. Colin, you made that, great suggestion, happy to do it. And there's plenty of time and opportunity for that. And likely concurrent with the POC, excuse me, POCD adoption and the rezoning, like, it's going to line up-
Oh, Mr. Corus, you got to stand a little closer.
Sorry, it'll probably line up pretty nicely with your ongoing processes.
And we, we are scheduled a POCD adoption, hopefully, a hearing date for September 9th. So after we adopt the POCD, we do have additional consultant dollars to revise our zoning regulations, which do need some level of revision based on a TOD study that was completed in 2019. Some of those aspects of that study, which was adopted unanimously by the Plan and Zoning Commission at that time, some of those elements still need to be incorporated, as well as other things. When we, just for the RTM's edification, when we adopt zoning regulations, it's through a public hearing process. Those regulations are noticed within the newspaper. It's, you know, it is a public process, so it's not something that's done behind closed doors. It's a very public process with public hearings.
Thank you. I believe Representative, any representatives that have not spoken yet wishing to speak? Representative Astorita.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Ken Astorita, District 1. First, I just want to tip my hat to, to all of you guys, Colin, Michelle, who have really taken the time to understand the state laws and the zoning regulations and everything that, that is involved with it, because I can tell you one thing, it confuses the hell out of me. And I know I wasn't here last week, but I listened to most of the commentary. I was here for the public hearing, and I really came into this with an open mind, thinking, okay, well, the state wants to put up some money for development projects, you know, let's, let's hear it out. But at the end of the day, I just have to kind of, when I don't necessarily understand all the i's that need to be dotted and the t's that need to be crossed, I need to rely on my instincts. And my instincts tell me that this is just not the right time for us to join something like this. And my guess is, this, this entity is not going to go away. And as I think it was mentioned before, we've got plenty of development that's going to be going on here over the next couple of years. I think we've got, what, 1,400 or 1,700 units or something that have been approved? Perhaps we should have those built and understand the impacts of what that is going to be before we join an organization like this. And I also do know that anytime you've got state, the state jumping in to provide a source of funding or gap funding, whatever you want to call it, there's always going to be strings attached, there's always going to be agenda that's going to be pushed. So I'm not saying that in the long term, this is necessarily a bad thing, but what I am saying is, tonight I am voting no, and I think this is something that we're probably in our best interest to at least postpone for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Bremen.
Thank you, Lenny Bremen, District 8. And I was formerly a member of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, and vice chair for a few years. I had been voting yes for the CMDA. I'm persuaded by the, you know, articulate words of Representative Colburn, Representative McCabe, members of our Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Director Harrigan, Mr. Corus. And, you know, I've asked my questions, I'm not going to belabor any points. But I think, you know, the bottom line for me is that there is plenty of upside here for the town, and I can't see any downside, frankly. And I think that we do have the opportunity now with the 8-30G moratorium to take our future into our own hands, as was said, to exercise local control and to use the CMDA, if we wish, as a force multiplier, to assist to the extent that we want to fund or to help fund, to also fundings, to the extent that we want, and to not accept funding or to not accept the assistance to the extent that we don't.
Thank you, Representative McCabe.
Michelle McCabe, District 4. I just want to address two main points. The first one is, I want to say that I really appreciate the concerns that members of the body and the public have expressed about being cautious and whether or not this is the right time. And it's been said before, and I will repeat, that all the information that we're looking for to make this decision in terms of whether this is a good arrangement for us to understand what impact this might have or have not on our zoning, what this would entail, we're not going to find out if we wait. We find out by voting yes and letting CMDA interact with our Board of Selectmen, our Town Planning and Zoning, members of the public, so that we actually understand what this relationship would entail. And then at that point, we sign a memorandum of agreement or not, and there's obviously a lot of public input and steps that happen before that. That's the moment of obligation, that's the moment when we understand if there are strings attached or not. That's the moment, and we will not get to that moment until we take the vote to, as my colleague, I'm going to quote you, Representative McDermott said, this is a date, we're not getting married. And so we need to get to know the other person first. The second point I want to make that's actually really important, and I think you will appreciate this, especially those of you that are as concerned as I am about our moratorium, and the comment that was made that there are a lot of buildings in the pipeline. And actually, I think it was Representative Colburn that mentioned this at the last meeting. Some of these projects may not get built at all. And part of the reason why it's so difficult to complete projects, and I am not as expert at this as others in, in the audience and folks that we've heard from. But financing is very challenging to acquire. And these projects require many layers and many different opportunities to fund a project. And one of the hardest pieces of that funding is gap financing, that is closing that, that, that moment that will allow these projects to come to fruition. CMDA is one of the rare opportunities that our community is going to have to actually see projects that are already approved by TPZ actually get built. And if those projects don't get built, we're not going to outlast this moratorium in four years or nine years. And we need CMDA to be able to get these projects already approved to construction. And so I highly urge the body to vote in favor of this, because again, without the vote, we don't get the information we need to actually make the decision that I know you all are very concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members, before I go to members that have already spoken, any members wishing to speak? Representative Longo, you can speak again.
Hi, I, sorry, I just had a question, and maybe this was talked about in the last meeting, and if I'm repeating myself, or if someone had already asked this, I apologize. If we, if, if this gets approved tonight, which I, I've already said I'm not in favor of this, do we have a, a chance to opt out if we feel like this isn't working? I wasn't clear on that, so that was the question that I had. I don't know who to address that question to, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. We'll call up Mr. Corus from the CMDA.
Yeah, sure. So, you know, fundamentally, this step, this step doesn't achieve anything. And it doesn't, I love the date, you know, marriage metaphor, like, so there, there's nothing to opt out of. You can just opt not to proceed to further steps, right? As, as Michelle explained, or excuse me, Representative McCabe explained, like, we're now go, if you were to opt in, we're now going to engage in that conversation. And it's very possible we just sign off on current zoning and establish a district, or it's possible we have recommendations. But there's nothing to opt out of, because there's nothing yet happening. So, yes, you can absolutely opt not to take further steps once we're discussing and figuring out more about what a relationship would look like. But there's nothing to opt out of, once you're taking this, just by having taken this first step, because it is only the first step, and it doesn't come with any obligation.
Okay, I-
Thank you.
I think that, I'm sorry, I might have one more question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You don't want to run away from the podium really quickly. So, I, I understand that there's not an actual opt-out, but if the, if you and your organization are suggesting something, and our town says no way, or we're not comfortable with this, or we need more time, I'm guessing what I'm asking is, would you, you know, be able to accept our regulations exactly like how they are written now? So I'm just unclear on that.
Sure, so I think there's two different questions in there. And, and one is a question of whether or not we will certify your existing recommendations, and I can't answer that question, because we haven't looked at them yet, because we don't look at them till after we take this step. The second question, though, which I think is the more important one, which kind of gets to the crux of, I, I think what we have been talking about for the last month and a half or so, is if we were to make a recommendation, it go, that recommendation is to the TPZ. And it's their decision whether or not to take it, right? There's no, there's no bypassing, there's no mandate, like, we don't have the authority to do that. The only thing that I have the authority to do is potentially make a recommendation of a zoning idea to TPZ. That, that's who we're making it to, because they're the body that controls zoning, and that doesn't change at all, just because you're working with us.
Right, and so for that reason, it doesn't seem, it just, you know, then TPZ, you know, I, I just don't see the need in, in partnering with you because of exactly what you just said, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And then, you know, if, if we say no, and the TPZ must pass new regulations that CMDA wants, then we don't get the grant money, if I'm understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely correct, but, but we might not recommend recommendations, because some of your zoning might be where we would want to see it. Like, I, I hate to get too, I don't want to get too much into theoretical. I, I think I've made the point that this is the first step to talk about zoning. And let's talk about zoning if you want, and then let's see where it takes us or, or not.
Thank, thank you. Any other representatives, first, Acting First Selectman Vitale has asked to speak.
Thank you all for the dialogue, and to the public for weighing in. Can I ask you to please pass this tonight, so we can continue the conversation with members of the public and with TPZ? Just a first step. I think the points raised were all good ones, doesn't bind us to anything. First Selectman Gerber was mentioned, he was a planner. He believed in getting as much information as possible. This is an option, this is a way to get more information, doesn't bind us to anything. And potentially, Ms. Longo, Representative Longo, mentioned the development and the tapping on our resources, our infrastructure. If we move forward with this conversation, there might be funding available that will help us learn more about what our needs are, and also fund that infrastructure. So, let's keep talking, we've been talking about this a lot, and ask you to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the body wishing to speak? Seeing none, we're going to take it to a vote. I think we're going to start with all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Astorita, Britton, Longo.
Sparcino.
Sparcino. Did I miss anyone? And any abstentions? Thank you. Congratulations, that motion passes. That, that motion passes 29 to 5. Moving on to, thank you, everybody for coming, we appreciate all your- Moving on to item number eight, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the moderator. Resolve that in accordance with CGS Section 9-163AA and CGS Section 9-19J, the representative town meeting of the Town of Fairfield hereby authorizes the designation of two early voting locations for the 2025 election to be chosen by the registrars of voters in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 9-163AAB1. And further resolve that the representative town meeting of the Town of Fairfield designates the following sites as same-day resignation, registration locations for the 2025 election, and authorizes the register of voters to complete any filings necessary to effectuate the designations with the Office of the Secretary of State. The designations are Mill Hill Elementary School, Burr Elementary School, Osborne Hill Elementary School, Stratfield Elementary School, Fairfield Ward High School, McKinley Elementary School, Holland Hill Elementary School, Riverfield Elementary School, Sherman Elementary School, and the Senior Center. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Waldron, seconded by Representative Carson. Is there any discussion on this item, Representative Waldron?
Cindy Waldron, District 3. I'd like to make a motion to amend the early voting portion of the resolution from two voting sites to one. I personally feel one is-
I would just take a second, and then you can say why. A seconded by Representative Whackerman. Representative Waldron has made a motion to change the two early voting locations to one. Go ahead.
I just feel that if we can keep it at Town Hall, everybody will know where to go. We can be consistent, it's efficient. We don't have to keep changing it possibly, and I just think it'll be easier for everybody to just go to one place.
Thank you. Do any members of the body have any comments or just questions on the motion on the table, which is to amend, amend the early voting locations from two to one? If anyone has it, to put it in the chat. Okay, seeing none. We'll take it to a vote. All those in favor of the amendment to change the wording from two early voting locations to one voting location signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Representative Carroll, Representative Ratsky. Abstentions? Representative Bremen is opposed to the amendment. Did I miss anyone? So the amendment, the motion for amendment from two to one passes, and we will move on with the motion as amended. Representative Blanchard.
Oh, all right. We're getting there, 2025. I'd like to make a motion to amend the 10 same-day voting locations to reduce it to one voting location. I think we're all for encouraging more ways-
Oh, wait, I would just get a second.
That's right.
And I believe you have to signify the actual voting location.
And the location would be Old Town Hall.
So, do I have a second, Representative? So, uh, do I have a second, Representative Shay? So the motion, uh, on the table is an amendment to, um, amend from the ten sites, um, on the resolution to one site at Old Town Hall or Town Hall?
Old Town Hall.
Old Town Hall, okay, great. Um, is there any, oh, go ahead and discuss, Representative Blanchard.
I think we're all for encouraging more ways for people to participate in democracy and voting, I just think because we're introducing so many different ways to do it, same-day voting registration, no absentee balloting, uh, early voting, it's good to keep consistency. I think a lot of towns our size all have one location and one centralized place for people to go and direct them to, uh, and when Election Day and leading up to Election Day is chaotic enough, having ten different locations could potentially cause confusion and, uh, potentially cause voters to be confused about where to vote, so I think one location that's central, that everyone can be on the same page in directing voters to, and encouraging them to continue to vote, uh, is going to be the best method moving forward, so, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the body on this motion to amend from ten to one, and the location being Old Town Hall? Uh, put your name in the chat, if any. None? Are there any comments from the public? I'm sorry, I didn't take the comment on the public before, if, um, Mr. Wagner would like to comment.
Uh, hello, uh, thank you, I'm Matt Wagner, one twenty-five Sterling Street. Um, I would just, uh, note that the, um, I think the, what you would look to do in this situation would be to simply eliminate the second portion. Um, the RTM doesn't have the power to assign a single location, only to, uh, assign additional locations beyond one, uh, so if that is what you would want to do, you would just eliminate the second portion of the motion.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the motion to amend? Representative Blanchard, do you want to withdraw your motion to amend? Okay, Representative Blanchard has withdrawn his motion to amend, would you like to make another motion to amend?
Thank you, Madam, uh, Madam Moderator, Rob Blanchard, District Six, I'd like to make a motion to strike the entire second section of this item.
Do I have a second, Representative Shay? So we, this is a, um, motion to amend, and from where it says further resolved, um, down would be struck from the, um, resolution. Stricken? Um, do you want to comment on this, Representative Blanchard?
For the same reason I mentioned, uh, in my amendment, I think it's important to have one centralized voting location to avoid confusion, uh, while also encouraging people, uh, to go to the same place.
Thank you. Any other comment on this motion to amend? Uh, seeing none from the body, I'll go back to the public, any public comment on this motion to amend? Uh, someone online, that just, okay. Um, seeing none, um, we'll take it to a vote, we're voting on the motion to strike, um, from the further resolved, um, down, um, from Agenda Item Eight. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Uh, the motion to amend, uh, carries unanimously. Moving back to Agenda Item Eight as amended two times, we're considering the resolution, um, now with one location to be chosen by the registrars, and, um, then we do not have to consider early, um, or same-day voting registration. Is there any discussion on this from the body? Representative Colburn?
Colin Colburn, District Eight, um, I am in favor of the amended resolution, I just want to say how, um, how disturbing, uh, our committee meeting was, um, with the registrar of voters. We are not the mediator, um, between these two people and, um, or these two, these two functions within registrar of voters, and, um, I am also very concerned with the resolution that was put forth, uh, seemed to go against the attorney from the Secretary of State's office. I don't believe we should be, we should have things on the agenda that, that do such, such things, so I just wanted to state that, that this was, um, something that just seemed completely unnecessary.
Thank you, I'll just clarify that, um, I did put the Agenda Item on the agenda before the opinion of the attorney was there, so, um, I'll just clarify that. Any other comments from the body? Seeing none, is there any comments from the public on this, uh, Agenda Item as amended? Seeing none, uh, we'll take it to vote. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Uh, the motion passes unanimously, thank you, thank you to the registrars. We'll see you back next year. Um, Item Agenda Nine, to hear and consider for the first time an amendment to the historic properties ordinance regarding the inclusion of a house at five fifteen Stillson Road, recommended by the Historic District Commission, sponsored by Cindy Waldron, District Three, and Liz Zesima, District Four. This item was presented at committee this month, and we will likely be voting on this item next month as per our rules to regulate. Is there any comment from the body on this item? And just because, uh, if there's any public comment on this item, we're not voting on it today, but want to give the opportunity. Seeing none, we'll move on. Um, Agenda Item Ten, the Ethics Ordinance was passed out of our Legislation and Administration Committee, and we will have a presentation at our August meeting and likely vote on it at our September meeting. Um, Agenda Item Eleven, to hear and consider the proposed rules to regulate the proceedings of the RTM as recommended by the RTM Rules to Regulate Committee. Uh, last week we ran out of time and did not hear from the Rules to Regulate Committee, and will do so now. Backup can be found on pages ninety-eight to one sixteen. We have RTM Rules to Regulate Committee men- members, Representatives Whackerman, Asterita, Colburn, Garskoff, and McDermott here, uh, Representative Steele is away, um, but they will be presenting on this item, we will not be voting on this item until next month. Uh, welcome.
Hi, um, thanks for listening to this. Um, I want to first thank, uh, the committee, which was a terrific committee, everybody worked very hard and very cooperatively, and I think we came up with some great changes, and I want to thank, um, our wonderful clerk, Betsy, because she came to every meeting and contributed an enormous amount, um, at, at night when it's not her normal hours, it was wonderful to have her, thank you. Um, so I thought I'd just give a quick summary, and, and then we all can answer questions, um, but these are the highlights of what we changed. Um, probably the most dramatic change is we eliminated all standing committees except L and A. Um, we talked about this for many meetings, and really decided that the, the committees don't really do much, except talk about what's on the agenda. We're also eliminating the consent calendar, which I'll explain in a minute, so then we don't even have a reason to vote at the committee, so, um, it does provide, though, that the RTM can always create a special committee whenever there's a need to, to work on an ordinance or any other need, um, they just have to vote on it, so, but L and A, we still need to look at ordinances and things like that. Um, we're eliminating the consent calendar, I'd say the primary reason is because, um, it doesn't give the public a chance to, to give their input, we're just deciding without any discussion. Um, it's also kind of recommended by Roberts rules to not use it except for very minor things, so, um, we added rules regarding remote attendance, because that was, that's a new thing since the rules were, were there, so, um, it's, you'll take a look at it and you'll see, but we want people to, you know, appear on screen when they're voting and when they're commenting, and various rules like that, for the, or for the whole meeting, that's right, the whole meeting, uh, actually, yeah, we'd like people to be physically there on the screen the whole meeting. Um, yeah, um, we, we just, the organization was redone, um, and clarified, and want to particularly thank Representative Garskoff and Representative Steele who worked on that. Um, so it looks very different, but it's much more logical, we think, and clearer to understand. Um, and there are more robust rules regarding decorum, we, we all felt like that was important. Um, so, uh, and the language was updated to be a little more caught up, you know, gender neutral, things like that. Um, I don't know if I need to get into details, should I? We defined, um, the different roles for the key people, the members, the moderator, deputy moderator, et cetera, which was already in there, but we made some changes. Um, defined different kinds of meetings, so I guess this is another big change, is we, we've been having committee meetings, right, the week before our meetings, but we won't have committees anymore, so we're calling this informational meeting, so that we'll still have these meetings so we can hear from people, have a week to ask questions and think about it, and then vote. Um, so it'll have a different term, and you won't have to meet in committees after, at eleven o'clock at night, so, um, and, let's see. I think that's me, those are the main things, um, did anyone want to add, yep, Josh?
Thank you, um, and thanks to, uh, Chair, um, Waldron, um, well, Whackerman, thank you, uh, that's better than what I, when I nominated, that's better than when I nominated Phil, yeah. Um, yeah, uh, sorry, um, I wasn't prepared to talk, that's why, and also it's past my bedtime, but, but, uh, the, uh, thing I want to say is, oh, so the informational meeting, we don't have committees, the informational meeting is no comments, just questions, uh, the idea being that we're going to try and streamline that meeting, so you can ask your questions, but save your comments for the, for the follow-up voting meeting.
Yeah, so Karen Asterita, District One, um, just a couple things for me, one, uh, I want to thank Karen, did a great job of spearheading this and, and pushing it through, and, uh, also, um, Jeff and Josh did, did a great job in, in drafting some of the language. Uh, Mark Collin and myself, um, you know, we just contributed with our brain power, which of course wasn't really that much, but, um. But I, I do, I do want to say, we, we met a bunch of times on this, and our goal going in was, okay, what can we do to make the RTM a more effective body, and make its members more effective participants, and to a certain degree, you know, not waste as, as much time, and we really talked about all kinds of different things, really throwing everything out, um, and starting from scratch, but we came down to the, the fundamental thing was really kind of getting rid of those committee meetings, which everybody says that when it's ten or ten thirty, and, oh god, I gotta, I gotta sit through this now, and, and they became, to most of us, al- almost somewhat pointless, um, and that's really like the big structural change that, that you will see, but, um, I, I think this is a, this is a great document, I think once you've all had a chance to read through it, it's going to make a lot of sense, and I think, um, we'll clarify a lot of things that, uh, that we deal with on a regular basis, so, thank you.
I'll just add that, um, I hope that's not me, kind of, it's you.
It's past my.
I'll, I'll just add that, um, this was a laborious project, um, when I, uh, this is my first, my first term on the body, and, um, my first committee meeting, um, I actually contacted a former moderator who no, who's no longer on this body, and I said, what is the point of these committee meetings, like, I don't get it, it seems so inefficient, um, and, and the point back was, well, good luck trying to, uh, amend the rules, like, no one wants to take up that work, well, guess what? We did. Um, so major props to everybody, and, um, please do ask lots of questions where you have them, as, as you read through the rules, hopefully you will read through them, um, again, laborious work, but, um, Karen, Josh, and, and Jeff did a lot of the heavy lifting there, so I think we're, we are a much more modernized, uh, body with these rules.
I don't need to speak.
Um, one thing I didn't mention is we did vote unanimously in favor of these, so I wanted to make sure you all knew that, Jeff's not here, but he, he was very much in favor. Does anyone? Yeah.
Are there any questions for the Rules to Regulate Committee? Representative Carroll? A little different, because we would normally have done this last week in committee format, but.
I, I don't know, just, um, Chris Carroll, District Eight, and I did read through it, and I want to thank all of you for the hard work, the one, the one thing that struck me as I read through, and I appreciate the change in all of the committees, that committees can be formed. Um, my concern there is committees formed this week, next month, another committee's formed, lots of committees get formed, and we find ourselves in two years back where we are again, and so my recommendation is that you put a finite timeline on committees. Committees are established for four months, whoever establishes, they can renew them, but there's a deadline to these committees, um, so that they, they serve a purpose, and they have an end date, uh, and there's, there's, things just don't go on and on, so, for your consideration.
Representative Carroll, I believe next week you can make that amendment. Uh, Representative McCabe?
Representative McCabe, District Four, um, I don't know if this is the right time to do this, but I have a request to add a piece of information to the Rules to Regulate. Colin and I just went through an experience of scheduling a public hearing, and we had no idea what we were doing, um, and it, it was very, it's, I still couldn't tell you how to do it, so if you could add a section on how the RTM calls a public hearing, and what it entails and all of that stuff, I would be really grateful, thank you.
Are you asking us to have another meeting?
It sounds like you have another date, Representative McDermott.
Yes, please.
Thanks, thanks, Michelle.
Any other comments from the body or questions? Representative Ratsky?
Representative Ratsky, District Ten, thank you guys for your hard work on this. I'm very chuffed to hear it was unanimous, it's nice when we can find consensus. Uh, my one question, I, I think the answer's probably yes, is did you get input and oversight from Attorney Piers regarding these rules? Do you have any, uh, commentary or feedback?
Excuse me, sorry, um, yes, Attorney Piers, um, reviewed and, and gave us our, gave us our feedback.
As a fellow attorney, that's all I need to know, thank you.
The lawyer okayed it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or questions from the body? Does? I'm not sure how you guys, uh, schedule another meeting.
I would, I'm guessing we would make amendments, uh, at the meeting, but Attorney Piers, what do you, because, because the, the vote would be next month, so. And we do have a few small amendments to make that, uh, based on Attorney Piers' review, actually, so.
I mean, you could make amendments on the floor next month, I mean, if you're going to add a whole new rule on public hearings, I don't, I don't know that you want to do that at the, at that meeting, but.
So procedurally, would we just meet between, we, we change it and re, resubmit, I don't really know how it would work.
Um, well, I mean, you could do it a couple of different ways, you could have it, um, you could have this body of rules pass and, uh, you know, decide if you want to add a public hearing rule, I mean, a public hearing, it's true that there's not a rule in public hearings, public hearings also don't come up that often for this body.
Right.
So, whether you want to have a body of rules that speaks to that, whether it might be statutes that dictate other rules for public hearings.
Right.
Although that you need it, um, but you could certainly have something on how you want to conduct a public hearing that governs, it may, it would be in addition to whatever statutory requirements there would be for that public hearing. Um, you could do amendments on the floor, but, you know, that could get messy.
Yeah, we wouldn't have talked about, I would suggest maybe that we, we vote on what's in front of us, there will be a few small amendments that Attorney Piers gave, but they weren't very substantive, no offense, um, I mean, I don't think they're controversial, um, and that we then deal with public hearings another time, uh, because as you said, it doesn't happen very often, um, that's my suggestion.
The next group can do that.
I think also, if, uh, Representative McCabe wants to make a section on public hearings, she can, she can write it up, and maybe work with Representative Colburn, because they just went through it, and then they can make an amendment.
We can make our own special committee to do.
Very good, any other questions? Uh, any online? Um, there'll be no. Um, there'll be no public comment on this today. We're not voting on this, um, and it should have been covered at committee. Um, so thank you all for this. This is definitely one of my goals. Uh, so I appreciate that. Thank you. And moving on to agenda item twelve, to consider and act upon any other matters presented to said meeting at which may be properly acted upon under the rules of the representative town meeting. Are there any other matters to be presented? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Representative Wolk, seconded by Representative Blanchard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 This meeting is adjourned much earlier than expected. Thank you, everyone.